We're ready. We're going to call the LaPorte County Council regular meeting for October 26, 2020, to order. If everybody please stand for the pledge, turn off your cell phones.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Auditor.
Mr. Gardner? Mr. Mullenauer?
Present.
Mr. Novak?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Present.
Mr. Santana?
Present.
And Mr. Yagowski. I see him there.
Is he on there?
Yes, yep, he's on, he's muted.
Okay.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the October 26, 2020 agenda. Mr. Rosenbaum?
I make a motion to approve with the following correction. Under the ordinances and under the appropriations, transfers, and requests, under the LaPorte County assessor, he's going to be requesting permission to spend from the Sales Disclosure Fund Number 1131 for laptops instead of the reassessment fund. That is the correction.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenauer. Is there any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Approval of the September 28, 2020 minutes, Mr. Mullenauer.
I have one minor correction. It's on page three, right at the first line. I'll have it right here. Just under, it starts out with Councilman Mullenauer reserved his report, and the next paragraph is my report. So it's just minor, but evidently that was supposed to be a different councilman's report.
So we have a motion.
I believe that was supposed to be mine.
Okay.
So.
A motion to amend as stated by Mr. Mullenauer, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
All right. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Public comment. Public comment is now open. Anybody from the public would like to speak?
Did we vote on?
Yeah.
We did?
We voted, all those in favor, yeah.
On the 28th?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
Messing with me now. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Anybody else from the public? Public comment is now closed. Department head reports. Any department heads would like to speak?
Good afternoon. This is Barb Mossman from the Human Resources Department. I just wanted to give you an update on where we are at with our proposed 2021 health insurance. At this point in time, we are looking at, we are going to have an increase in our renewal. Approximately, we're looking at right now about a little over 7%. GIS is on the, meeting with us today to answer any questions that you might have. They are still working on getting that number down for us. The reason for the increase this year is we did have some increase to our numbers of employees that are on the plan and how they are now electing from the single plan to a family plan. So that does have a bearing on the increase also there. And it also looks like for this year, we've paid a little over $250,000 in COVID claims. And obviously, nobody was anticipating that as a factor this year in our health insurance. So overall, our plan is still functioning very well. We're about 358,000 under expected claims. And to date, right now, we've had a little over $709,000 that have been returned to the plan through prescription reimbursement and then also through our captive reimbursement. I do not have specific health insurance premiums available for you right now at this time because we are still waiting, I believe, for some quotes to come in. Does anybody have any questions with regards to this information?
Will we have this prior to our November meeting?
Definitely yes, because right now, we have, we're anticipating starting open enrollment November 16th. I don't know if it's going to be feasible for us to have a special meeting before your regular scheduled meeting so that we can have everything approved prior to the start of open enrollment. Right now, at this point in time, I believe, from what I, the numbers I obtained from the auditor's office, I believe we are about $7 million last year that we had budgeted for the health insurance. And what I had talked at the commissioners' meeting last Wednesday about this year for an expected claim liability for 2021, we're looking at about $9.4 million.
Wow. Seven to 9.4 is not 7%.
That, yeah. That's way higher than 7%. Just saying.
And again, any questions with regards to these numbers? Craig Minney from General Insurance Service, he is our agent of record for the health insurance, or Earl McLean are on this call and will be able to offer any additional information to kind of make a little bit better sense of this for you.
Well, obviously, we're going to have more discussion when we get a harder number. Mr. Rosenbaum, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, you had mentioned 7% and 7% on 7 million is not, not 1.4 million to bring it up to 9.4. So I just didn't know how we went up 2.4 million. And I'm a little at a loss for trying to put those numbers together.
Hey, you guys, if I might interject too. In Barb, I thought that when I saw her, a number come out that it was 13%. Now, you alluded to this evening that it was 7 point something, you weren't sure. I just, I just went at 8% increase and again, it still doesn't round up to what you're saying.
All right.
And right now, our, the expected claim liability is what we're seeing, the increase to the 9.4 from what we had last year. And the 7.8% is also, including the stop-loss increase too. So, and I'm sorry, Craig, would you like to add anything to this to help clarify?
Yeah, sure. Good evening, everyone. So, yeah, I can't speak to the budget amount in terms of, we, the 9.4 million that Barb's referring to would be the actuarial assessment of what the claims will be in 2021. So for example, employees' premium contributions are not factored into that number. I suspect those play into the $7 million that was budgeted last year. So again, the 9.4 is just merely the actuarial projection.
So when do you anticipate us having hard numbers on this? Or harder numbers?
The 7.8% is hard, that's a firm number from Berkeley, our current stop-loss company. We've got a handful of additional stop-loss quotes, we're in the midst of negotiating. The best of those at this point is about 4%. That's not final. So there is cause for guarded optimism. As Barb mentioned, the COVID dynamic, the fact that we do have a quarter of a million dollars of paid claims through October, some additional potential claims on top of that, there's, there's just some fluidity to the right to the negotiation process there. So within, I mean, this week, we're pushing very, very hard to get this all finalized.
All right. So Barb, as soon as you get this information, please get it to the council and if we need to call a special meeting or something, we'll have to call a special meeting. Mr. Rosenbaum?
I just want to add, the estimated employee reimbursement is 1.2 million plus. So that helps bring the 9.4 down to 8.2. So now I'm getting closer to that initial number, but it's still a 17%, 17% increase to get from seven to 8.2. So I just, I'm just playing with the numbers in my head real quick, and that's what I'm coming with. And I understand that there are many different things that come into it. So I welcome, I'm looking forward to that meeting with more dynamic numbers.
Definitely. Does anybody else on the council have a question? Hearing none. Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Any other department heads? Any other department heads? Liaison reports, Mr. Rosenbaum?
Attended several meetings. Most of the ones that I've attended were live. Did attend some COVID meeting. Very interesting to hear what's going on lately. I don't want to go into details. Redevelopment Commission, a lot going on there. And then I'm going to end it there because the others are, are going to be, even spoke about or dealt with soon.
Mike?
I've got a couple of things. On September 26, I participated with a number of other councilmen walking through the Michigan City Courthouse. I appreciate that invitation. And of course, it was discussed and orders were presented to the, ton and blank, to try and save as many of the items that we could see that needed to be saved as possible. And I think that, I haven't heard any results on that. I know some.
They've already started moving a lot of the things out and they're out at the fairgrounds.
Okay, that's what I heard. Good. And then on September 30, I attended the redevelopment meeting that Councilman Rosenbaum alluded to. Very, a lot of things going on there too, especially with the rail service. An update we received on that with the connecting, I guess you could say, connection, link with the rail service and eventually, in the very near future, it sounds like we'll be getting that switch put in by, down on the CSX. So that's good news. Very good news. On October 3, attended the invitation to tour the new Northwest Hospital, our new hospital. And very impressed with the thought gone into it and just what they participated, evidently the hospital personnel were able to participate and give a lot of thought and meaning to some of the things to, that they haven't had in the past that can make the service to patients much more, much better. So. On October 4, attended the Joint Solid Waste District Board meeting. On October 20, attended by Zoom, LaPorte County Health Board meeting. Everybody was on Zoom for that. And the updated information, most of which was regarding our COVID-19 virus. And just want to commend the great work that is being done and has been, has been done and is still being done, of course, by our health department. And we will be having two testing sites in the near future. I don't think I caught the date. I don't think they gave a date yet. The one, well, one that's still, it's Civic, in LaPorte Civic Auditorium, but the new, I stayed, I stated two new, but the one is still, will be going at the Civic Auditorium, but the new one will be at the Michigan Township Trustees Office on Michigan Boulevard. And the last thing of that meeting was, information was Tony Mancuso, who's the Health Department Administrator. He announced his pending retirement early next year, and a committee was formed to begin the process of accepting applications, of course, and then they'll do some interviewing after that. So that'll be early next year, though, it sounds like.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Councilman Quinn?
Nothing this much, Mr. President, this month, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Santana?
Oh, yeah, Mr. President, I really don't have anything for this evening, but what I plan to do at our November meeting is kind of get a concise and again, as brief of as possible, in like kind of a year-end report with my liaisons, and I'll be reporting that to you at the November meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gardner?
Yeah, I spoke to Sheriff Boyd earlier before the meeting, basically on the body cameras, the grant that he's going after and the matching. Also discussed, and I thought we were getting body cameras a few years ago, and he said, yes, we did get them, but they didn't work properly, and the company took them back. And by the time they took back the cameras, the grant that they'd received, it already went away. So now they're applying for this new grant, and it is much needed. So the council will be asked to support that tonight. That's it.
Thank you. Going once, going twice?
My report, there's a couple of departments, animal shelters on tonight for permission to spend, transferring some money. And the other one is community corrections. They're in desperate need of a new vehicle out there not to exceed $30,000. So that's all I've got. We'll move on to new business, public hearing on the Okra Grant, closed out Phase One. Tony Rodriguez?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Tony Rodriguez, Director of Community and Economic Development. The, what you have before you is a public hearing, which will allow the office of, the state of Indiana's Office of Community and Rural Affairs, for us to adhere to their closeout compliance procedures. And we will, when I hand the meeting right back to you, open that and then request to close that after any public comment. We have a sign-in sheet here before, before the public for them to go ahead and sign that.
We're going to do a public hearing on Phase One and Phase Two.
That is correct. And then Phase One, just for brief explanation, Phase One is the closeout completion. We did, Bailey did distribute to you this evening, and an email was sent to those that are attending via Zoom, which, which is a very quick summary of, of the economic impact and the, I would just say, a culmination of the very good work done by individuals such as your county planner, Mitch Bishop, who's your certified grants administrator for, for the county. So my hat's off to Mitch, the, all the members that serve the Redevelopment Commission and considered the applicants and the time they put into reviewing those applications. So it cannot happen without a very aggressive team approach and one that we're extremely proud of. Obviously, I believe that was what lent itself so well to a successful Phase Two application and that being supported by the state of Indiana. So we are, we're, I would be remiss if I didn't compliment the county commissioners for supporting and it helping launch the program, but then as well as our state elected officials, which helped bird dog those funds downstate and then helped deliver the successful approval back to the county of LaPorte. So we are extremely pleased to present these, these results to you this evening on Phase One and appreciate your support of the program going forward for Phase Two. Just in very quick summary, the grant funds for Phase One were advanced for approximately, and I believe the auditor could correct me if I'm wrong, there was about a two to three week float in which those funds were advanced and then reimbursed by the, by the state of Indiana. So a very quick turnaround, almost faster than private sector. So I would applaud every, everyone that had a hand in Phase One. We look forward to that same success in Phase Two. And I can explain during the Phase Two, or I can do that now, and I might as well do that now since I'm standing at your microphone.
Right, go ahead.
The, it was a, we had a total of 27 applicant companies that were funded in Phase One. Phase Two, which was funded for the same amount, we have 40, a net 40 applicant companies, which would impact approximately between 430 and 450, retaining 450 low to moderate income jobs. So we're extremely pleased with the, the level of marketing, all of our strategic partners and stakeholders have got, spread the word so that we can touch that, that many more companies and do carry out the mission of retaining jobs to these companies that are struggling. So we're, we're extremely pleased and I, anyone that has the ability to comment publicly, if they're joining via Zoom, would be encouraged to do so. And, and I know we are fortunate to have State Representative Pressle with us here this evening. So I will hand it back to you.
Thank you. And kudos to you, Bailey, and Matt Riordan, for all the work that you guys have done. And to Representative Pressle, Mr., would you like, anything you'd like to add, Jim? Mr. Pressle, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. You know, I just wanted to come down tonight when I heard we were going to do the public hearings on the, the closeout of Phase One and the, the start of Phase Two and compliment Tony and Bailey, their office, Redevelopment Commission, and Mitch Bishop. This is a great example of how the state and the county will function together when all the pieces come together. And for such a great opportunity to provide these lifeline grants, and not only with one round, but to be successful in two rounds, that's $500,000 to small businesses that really, during this pandemic, need all the help that they can get. And I just wanted to commend everyone involved and especially the council for acting fast. All too often, we see government just drag its feet, right? There's always an objection to something. You guys have done an outstanding job, and I just think you should be.
Thank you. Keep up the good work. We appreciate all you're doing. Thank you. So at this time, we're going to open a public hearing for the Okra Grant, closeout Phase One. So if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak on the closeout of the Okra Grant, Phase One. Anybody from the public? Anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Hearing none, public comment for Phase One, closeout is over, and we'll go straight into the next one?
Please.
So at this time, we're going to open the public hearing for the Okra Grant, Phase Two. So the public hearing is now open. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on the Okra Grant, Phase Two? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody from the public like to speak? Hearing none. Public hearings are now closed on the Okra Grant. So we're going to go to item number three, consider additional appropriation in the amount of $250,000 from General Fund for the Okra Grant, Phase Two. Tony Rodriguez?
Yes, Mr. President. Once again, this, this, the mechanics of this would be that the county will agree to advance the funds that have since been approved and documented in the form of a grant agreement. That document has also been executed by the county auditor, which assures its reimbursement capability. Again, just to remind members of the council and any of the members of the public, once approved by the local committee, the applicants are forwarded to the state of Indiana for a final approval, which really does, quite frankly, eliminate all risk to the county for not being reimbursed. So a comprehensive process, however, it does require an allocation of that funding in advance. So that is the request.
And just to clarify, the county Madam Auditor, are you on? Just to clarify, the county's been.
I am.
The county's been reimbursed for the first round, the $250,000?
Yes.
All right. So, so what's your pleasure?
We, we were reimbursed within two weeks.
Great.
Motion to approve.
I just wanted to reiterate that.
Second.
Who was that?
Mr. Quinn made motion to approve, Mr. President, and Santana here is doing the second, gladly to approve that. And with a little comment of, Mr. Rodriguez, you're doing a great job, and this is really helping the people in the outer areas in the county.
All right. And, and kudos to Mitch Bishop too, because I left him out. I'm just saying that today. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. See you Wednesday. Next item is approval of the 2021 budget for Hannah Township. Attorney Brandon Henske?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mr. Quinn.
Discussion, real quick. Discussion. I just want to confirm that the amount is the same as the prior year.
Thank you for offering that. I get paid by the word. So I know Mr. Gardner was trying to cut me off there. Yes, it's absolutely the same budget as it was last year.
Thank you. Confirming.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question, maybe the auditor can answer this.
Sure.
I do have a Form Four that would need to be circulated for signature. I see there are only three members here tonight.
If you give that to, is what, will the three of us will sign it and then we send it to them to electronically sign? Is that okay?
I just need to upload it into the gateway.
Then you can pick that up with Christie or something later in the week.
Okay.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consider permission to apply for the grant to assist in the purchase of body cameras. Sheriff John Boyd?
Good evening, council members. Here before you asking permission to pursue a grant from the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute to help us, to enable us to purchase body cameras and offset the cost, it would be a 70-30 match. So the federal government, Criminal Justice Institute would pay for 70%. We would pay here locally the remaining 30%. The total cost on the cameras, we would outfit our entire merit division as well as our courthouse security, so a total of 75 cameras. The total cost of that project would be $654,540. Of that, the, the grant would pay for $458,178. The remainder, which is $196,362, would be paid here locally. The first two years, the grant would cover the cost completely, 100% for the first two years over a five-year period. Commencing on the third year, the first payment that we would be responsible for here locally would be $32,727. The fourth year, we would be responsible for 50%, which is $65,454. And the fifth year, we would be responsible for $98,181. That would satisfy the total amount that would be owed, would be owed to the body camera company for, to which we would be contracted. The rub on this, though, however, is that after the fifth year, we would still be responsible, and we would be responsible from then on out for the cost of storage for the cameras, which would be iCloud storage.
Video storage.
Yes.
Right.
Yes. That would be an annual cost of $107,888. And we believe this is very important, and as Mr. Gardner alluded to, we did several years ago, entering an agreement. We had a grant that Larry Butcher, through his agency, had helped us to secure through Homeland Security. We, we're tested some cameras. We liked a particular camera. We got the entire department outfitted. We got it here, and we quickly realized that we had not been sold what we thought we had been sold. The company acknowledged that it wasn't fitting our needs, and they took the cameras back. By that time, the grant did expire, and therefore, the money had to go back to the, the grantor. So this is something that has been a goal for us, and it also falls in line with the 21st century police reforming, which we've been adhering to. We're pleased that there are six pillars, and of the six pillars, we've accomplished four of those. There are two that we're currently working on. One, we received a grant for, in which we're updating our policies and procedures. And the final one would be a pillar that involves body cameras. And so we come before you, we're trying to do as best we can to be frugal, but technology is very, very expensive, and it's something that we look, would be mandated down, down the road. We try to, want to try to offset that cost as much as possible through grants.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum?
Second. I do have a question, though.
Seconded by Mr. Mullenauer. Question?
The warranty on these, what kind of warranty are they?
That's a good question. I don't have that information in front of me, but it certainly would be through the first five years that we would owe on it. It may be a fifth through a seventh year, there may be an extended warranty, but I don't have that information right now. The figures that I gave you, though, would be actually what it would cost. It wouldn't be coming before you and asking for additional.
If you find that information out, can you email that out to all of us?
Certainly.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Anybody at home?
Mr. President? Mr. President, yes. Hey, Sheriff, okay, lot of numbers, lot of years, lot of different things you may mention there. I guess I'm going to ask the question, after all that's said and done, when is the obligation of, you know, after, you know, your funds that, that you would have available and would the grant, when is the time going to come where this is going to fall back on our, our finances?
Well, beginning the third year, we would come before you and ask for the initial installment of the $32,000, which would be, we would be responsible for 25% of the match. And then through the fifth year, after the fifth year, they would be completely paid for, with the exception of, then we would be responsible for the cost of storage, the footage storage, which is $100,000 annually.
Okay. I just, yeah, I, I think it's, we just want to make that clear for everybody. And then it's, I mean, trust me, I'm, I'm. And then it's, I mean, trust me, I'm, I'm all in favor of this, but I just want to get those numbers of what, what it will cost, you know, back basically to the general fund. So thank you.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next item is, just for, for a reference, is I've appointed Councilman Mark Yagowski, the historian for the Michigan City Courthouse Project. He's got a very strong interest in it, and he's doing a great job photographing it and doing things. I think he was actually around when it was built. So he's got a particular interest in that. So Councilman Yagowski will continue to give us updates on that. So no old business, no correspondence. We're going to move into ordinances and resolutions. None appropriations, transfers, and requests. Lapeur County Commissioners, hang on one second. Bear with me. What's the verbiage?
Mr. President?
Wait a, yes.
I wanted to address that, if I could, with the commissioner, with the council. I sent you all a memo last Thursday indicating there's been a change in the state process for CAREZAC reimbursement. And so we are recommending pretty much a change in posture to the council and the commission, where the, the state has now said that they're going to put a premium on reimbursing payroll first, before some of these other expenses. In conjunction with our CAREZAC consultant, Jake German, we're recommending to the council and the commission that we go ahead, two things tonight. One, have you authorized, if you would, an intent to approve this as opposed to an appropriation. And secondly, though, authorizing the auditor to submit the entire batch of salary to the CAREZAC committee, so that we can get the entire $3 million plus that's still owed to the county under this allocation in-house, and then have you, the council, the commission, and the auditor control the disbursements locally, rather than us having to go to the state CAREZAC committee for every single appropriation. This will work better. It's cleaner. It's more efficient, and it will also provide a process by the decision-making coming local, and also not having it all be done by December 30th, which you all will recall was the, was the pressure weighing on all of our heads, which was to get all of this reimbursed, claimed, reimbursed, and submitted back to the county by December 30th. This way, we get the entire $3 million in under a claimed reimbursement for salary, and then you all have the leisure of some time, January, February, to make individual disbursements. You'll want to make some decisions about a threshold level that you might want for your COVID committee, you know, whether it's 50, 75,000. Where those decisions go to the COVID committee, maybe anything over that, let's say 75,000, comes to the full council. But we're asking tonight for two motions. One, to approve an intent to appropriate the 60,000 for the DLZ ventilation improvement study that's handled under the CAREZAC. And two, authorization for the auditor to submit our entire request for salary reimbursement to the CAREZAC committee, so we can get the entire $3 million plus in, in the bank in a COVID account that is set up with the county.
Great. Mr. Rosenbaum?
I, I have a question for you, and by requesting or getting the $3 million back for salary, doesn't that have to be used on salary?
No, unfortunately not. Good question. We've already checked, and I've, I've got, it's all our indication at this point that if it's in the COVID account, because remember, that was salary, and what happened was this, the state became nervous over audit posture that the feds might take. And so what they're taking the position with all of the governmental entities, look, we can reimburse for salary, and know that that's not going to be audited by the feds. But once it's in your COVID account, it's, it's your discretion, council, commission, and auditor, as to how you then make allocation from there. Okay? So that's the, that's why it's important we get it in your COVID account.
I'm hearing you. I'm just not 100% on a comfort level on, on what you're saying, that we can then spend it any way we want after we told the state that we need.
You can only spend it on COVID-related matters.
COVID-related.
You can't spend it on anything else.
He's not saying you can spend it on anything.
You're getting reimbursed for salary.
Ventilation improvements, that type of thing.
So I guess the thing that we could do is, is make the motion to submit the claims, but then we could get some ruling, additional ruling on what exactly could be spent. Worst-case scenario, we get all our salary back. It's still a good day.
Well, considering the state is separated, for us to get 3.6 million, grabbing the 3.6 million makes completely 100% sense.
Right.
How we spend it, it's just, you know, when you say auditing, the state, it's okay if they just give us the money if we say we're using it for salary, and then we use it for Band-Aids, or whatever, or ventilation systems, just makes me a little uneasy with my background when you use the word auditing.
What I can do as well is provide you a copy of the updated guidance from the state budget director. There is a priority list of what can be claimed, including public safety and public health employee payroll, which is what we're obviously submitting on. But included among those things that are fully comparable under your COVID are the expenses of providing paid sick and family leave, unemployment insurance expense, facilities, improvements like the ones that we're talking about. So no, we're not going to have problem with the state coming back and auditing. Once we can support all of those, and again, it's got to be fully transparent. That's why I'm suggesting to you a process where it's fully transparent, that you all are making allocations, the council, the commission, and the auditor are making it a public record, and then we are, we are confident that we're not going to have secondary questioning as long as it falls under the ambit of COVID-related expenses.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And to, to Councilman Rosenbaum, as soon as I saw that, in fact, Randy and I had a conversation, and I said the exact same thing. How can we represent that this money is going to go to this, and then, once we get it back in the coffers, that we are going to spend it here, there, and everywhere, which, I mean, listen, I'm, I'm all in favor of getting that money. But then I did ask the question, have we spent that much in the sheriff's department and EMS? And if we have, well, I guess our, our, what do you call it, money tree is, is gone. Then where else are you going to, how else can you spend it? Go ahead, Shaw.
And that's a fair, and it's a fair question, Jeff. What's interesting is, what, what happened was this, because to give a little background, what happened is, the state was taking heed on, on just how slowly it was allocating these funds to local government units. About 300 million was originally set up. Only about 20, 30 million was ultimately claimed. And so what happened was that in order to get the money out the door faster from the state, they said, you can claim, and this isn't even COVID-related expense. This is any kind, if you can believe this, any kind of public health or public safety expense would can be paid back to the county. And so that's not even COVID-related. We're talking $2 million in total sheriff's expenses. We're just trying to put together enough claims to go ahead and get the entire $3 million back. We have been advised by our consultant, Jake German of Barnes and Thorber. It's totally appropriate. He's advising other clients to do the same. This even, this isn't even COVID-related public health and public safety expense. He's saying, any salary at this point, go ahead and submit. We know we can get it from the state quickly. The state doesn't want to be in the business of having to go about and auditing all of these COVID expenditures locally. I frankly think that the governor's CAREZAC committee got very nervous and very hinky about having to make individual appropriation decisions where they may get second-guessed, whereas I think they're feeling from audit posture, they're much more comfortable doling it out to the entities and letting the entities deal with it.
Right. Mr. Rosenbaum?
I think that's, that's the biggest part of it. But yeah, that's how we get to the $2 million, because you cannot say that we got $2 million in sheriff's expenses just on COVID. This is $2 million total in payroll, and it's about a million EMS. We were trying to come up with.
Right.
So, so I want to rephrase what I said before, and I'm sorry if I cut you off. I didn't mean to. We're going for reimbursement, $3 million. Once we've got reimbursed, that covers those expenses. Now we have the cash in our account, which supposedly cover those expenses. Now we can use the cash in our account to spend it any way we wish.
Correct.
Thank you. I just, I just want to take it away from that now, we've already got the reimbursement, the cash is in our account, we've already spent this money, so now we're able to use it for whatever else we need to use it.
As long as it's related to COVID.
As long as it's related.
These other public safety and public health expenses were pre-budget. This is not things on, on top of, 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 you know, these were, were COVID-related. We're, we're saying all of it. They're saying any public safety, public health. I hear you. I mean, I think they're right to try to get this out the door. Our problem is, it's got to be claimed by December 30th. We're in a lot better shape. A bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. Better to get the money in-house, and then you all figure out a process on how you want to allocate that.
We can decide what we're going to spend it on a later date.
And everything else going forward.
Okay. All right. So I, I would.
Let me ask this, then, I guess, real quick. Because this wasn't agenda'd, I know, I, I got your email, read through it a few times, and, you know, again, as long as it's all on the up and up and straight up, I'm, I'm good with that. I, I would just like to say that. But can we do it, since it wasn't agenda'd? Let me ask you that right now, since you're asking.
Yes. I mean, what you, you're pulling under this one agenda item. I've got the agenda item on there about the DLZ appropriation, and you could add to the motion that you're asking that the auditor submits. You know, frankly, we could have the auditor submit without even the, the motion. She was previously submitting reimbursement. But I'd like to have on the record what we're doing, so that it's all clear what you're, what you're seeking.
Okay. Let me confer, because I've got one more thing to say, or ask you, Shaw, after this. I just want to confer with our attorney, Guy. Are you of the same opinion?
I'm on board with that, Mr. Santana. Do you hear that?
Okay, thank you. And you know what? I'm a straight shooter, man, and you guys know that. Are all three of the commissioners unavailable this evening to make the presentation, Shaw, that you just did, which was a great presentation? Don't worry about it.
Now, they simply asked me because it's a legal issue involved to go ahead and present to you. That's why it was coming from our office.
Okay.
But, but they got the same, they got the same email that you all did. And, and again, that only came to us, it was a day after the commissioners meeting, so I couldn't raise it there. Came to us on Thursday. We got a new direction from Barnes and Thorber, and that's why I sent it out to both council and commission, and because it was a legal issue involved, they wanted me to present it.
All right. All right. Mr. Yagowski?
Mr. President?
Yes. What'd he say?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Yes.
Okay, yes. Okay. If you remember, and I've stated at last meeting, the last two meetings, I've been unhappy with some of the expenditures that happened under the commissioners, because it has been a joint commissioner, council decision. It was commissioners. So with that thing, I'm in favor of, of this project that we're talking about, but I'm, but I keep hearing what the commissioners and council will make a decision later on. What I'm, what I'm upset about is that, that's not what was told before. We, what we're saying right now is, any funds that are not totally reimbursable, 100% reimbursable, that becomes our issue, not the commissioner's issue, even though they spent the money. So when this money comes in, it's not a commissioner/council decision. It's a council decision, because it's monetary. That's our function of government.
Mark, a question, clarification. In my knowledge, all the PPE decisions and COVID decisions have come from the COVID committee, on which both council and commission serve.
Yeah. But I, but I just, but we all at meetings disagreed. For example, the way we opened up and had to spend money, we said it at meetings. I'll say it again. If it's not we, then it's going to be our problem, because kind of expenditures. They were supposed to be small major, small minor things that happened. We ordered, you know, PPE, those type of things. Your committee's good for that. Major's sitting still back to the council. This is not a commissioner decision. It's a council decision when the money gets appropriated back.
Okay, Mr. President, if I can, if I can interject, too, because, Mark, I'm so glad you brought that up. I'm looking at my notes. That is one of the things that I looked at, because I, if I remember correctly, and I don't have the email in front of me, but it was like, the one paragraph said, well, this way we'll be able to recoup all of the 3.6 mil, which I'm all, I'm all good with. But then again, the next paragraph did say, who would be in control of that, and I, I am right there with Mr. Yagowski, saying, you know, controlling the disbursements of monies are the obligation of the council.
The bottom, the bottom line.
You can respond to that, please.
Right. The bottom line, council members, is the council determines where the money goes, when it comes in, and the council has the final say on where it goes, when it goes out. So that's, that's, that's a given. That's the way it is. So.
Well, I'm just, I was just.
We're not, by, by passing this, by passing, by passing this, we are not forming, excuse me, excuse me, excuse.
It's not a distribution.
Wait a second.
You misquoted, you misbooked about that.
Turn that thing off.
Honest to God.
Turn it off. Hit it.
Not a commissioner's.
Hey!
The question would be, what's your threshold?
Listen, listen to me. We're, we're done with the conversation. So the bottom line is, is the council has control over the money. By passing this, we are not granting or creating a committee, a joint committee of the commission, the auditor's office, and the council to spend $3 million. That's not what the intent of this is. We will determine at a later date how that money's spent and what happens with it. Does anybody have any questions with that?
No, I have no questions, but as long as all parties understand just what you said, I'm good with that. I want to get the dough back here, too.
I just stated it. So is there, is there a motion? Wait, hang on a second.
I would also ask, on behalf of the council, that Mr. Friedman get an opinion letter from Barnes and Thorber as to the appropriate way to, to disperse of those funds, so the council can go ahead and disperse or help first.
This is kind of a two-point thing. One, we get the money in, and two, we determine exactly what we're allowed to spend the money on, so that we know that there's no issues. So with that, is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Mouldauer. Is there any other questions or comments?
Well, let me understand this, because I think in that letter, it was, he, Shaw, correct me, but you were saying for us to give what the intent to do such, but we want to be voting on it tonight, so.
We're, we're voting on, the only thing we're voting on is what the.
Your second motion, at least to signal the DLZ that has begun the work, that there's at least an intent to appropriate for the 60,000.
Right. So we only did the first one.
We only did the $3 million.
We're only doing, we're only doing the $3 million reimbursement. That's the only thing that motion was for at this point. We're not, we didn't combine the 60,000 into that. So this is for the one. So the only thing we're approving tonight is what was just stated.
Right.
Motion and a second.
Can we see then a second motion on the DLZ?
Right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. What's your pleasure on this? What's your pleasure?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the $60,000, $60,000 for the study.
It's, it's, you would like to make a motion for an intent to spend, is what we need to state. Is that okay?
Ventilation system.
Is that okay, Mr. Yagowski? Is that okay, Mr. Yagowski?
I, no, it's not for, the ventilation is a yes or no. I, I have permission to, to spend for DLZ for the study.
Which again, and then it's listed.
Is that a second, Mr. Santana?
Get that, and then this could be reimbursed by the COVID.
Mr. Santana, is that a second?
That's correct. Okay.
I second.
I'll take it.
Terry Gard, seconded by Terry Gardner. Now on the question, is there any, Mr. Santana, did you have something to say?
Only what Mark was just going to put in, and that is, what, what fund we're going to take it out of, sir?
Okay, I'm sorry. It's two funds, because I don't have that available. I'm not going to.
Riverboat or general?
Riverboat or general? Riverboat or general?
I'll just, I'll, I'll do general.
All right. We have a motion and a second to, for the $60,000 for DLZ out of the general fund. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Lapeur County Coroner is here for an additional appropriation out of Riverboat or General funding an amount of $6,500 for toxicology.
I'll make a motion that comes out of general, Mr. President.
Motion by Santana, seconded by.
I'll second.
Mr. Quinn?
Mr. Quinn. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Bob. Next item is Community Corrections, Requesting Additional Appropriation out of Riverboat or CCD for a transport van. Theirs is completely done in. So I think I talked to.
I, I do know that, and I'm going to make a motion and ask the auditor, again, is I, I do know that, and I'm going to make a motion and ask the auditor, again, is this, I guess you listed it as it, so can we take it out of CCD? Do we have money there yet?
Yes.
I will make my motion then to say to appropriate, appropriate that CCD, account number 1138.
I'll second.
Second.
Motion by.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Santana, seconded by, I believe, Mr. Quinn and Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions on that?
Just want to say thank you to Director Brown.
Oh, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Lapeur County Surveyor requesting permission to spend from the Coroner Perpetuation Fund 1202 for equipment, supplies, and service contracts in the amount not to exceed $30,000.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mr. Santana. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is Lapeur County Assessor is requesting permission to spend from the Sales Disclosure Fund 1131 for laptops not to exceed $16,600.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mouldnauer, and you've talked, these are going through Darlene.
Okay. All right. And can you, can you just let us know how many there are? Again. Eight.
Right. All right. Questions? Question? Was there a question? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Lapeur County Highway Department requesting permission to spend out of the MVH Fund, purchase of a computer in the amount of $1,505.99.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Santana. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Lapeur County Animal Shelter requesting permission to transfer from Donation Fund 4100 to Part-Time Account in the amount of $18,500. We're talking with the Director earlier, she stated that this account is set up for part-time funds. I know there was a question from one of the Council members, this donation fund is set up for that. So what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, our second. And thank you, Mr. President, for verifying that. Okay, thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Santana. Is there any other questions? You want to talk? Oh, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now you can run.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Human Resources requesting permission to transfer from advertising to office supplies, for office supplies in the amount of $600.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Santana, seconded by Mr. Mouldnauer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. That completes the items on our agenda. There is something that I think everybody here got a copy of it, but evidently, the construction at the courthouse, they found, was this actually in a bottle, Joey?
It was, it was. Mr. President?
Mr. Historian, go ahead.
To you guys, I made copies of it. It was found in a bottle. The bottle broke, but it was, it just stayed during the administration of Common Eric, Mayor Common Eric. So they, they saved it for it, and I made copies for everybody to have it tonight.
It's January 2nd, 1968. So it's pretty interesting. I think everybody in the county and everybody in the city signed it at that time. So it's pretty interesting.
All the time, the Michigan City Administration Office were at, at the courthouse.
Right. Mike Schultz was still the Assessor at that time. So, yeah.
At the same time, right.
Right. Is there anything else to come before the Council tonight? Hearing nothing, motion to adjourn?
Earlier, sir.
What?
Sir?
Yep.
Real quick, if, I didn't get a chance to talk earlier about it, but they saved every single step, which was, was the granite steps going out. They were able to save every single step, plus the railing, plus the front facade. And of course, as you all know, the Commissioners were helping out, especially Shaw Freeman, with getting the dome saved, whatever we can save on it. So at some point, we need to get together for the museum to decide how we want that displayed. Maybe we will probably have to come up financially with some help to do it.
Absolutely. We need to, if you get a chance, send up, forward a picture of that dome from the inside, not the upper side, the lower side. If you get a chance, forward that to the Council, would you please? So everybody else can see it.
From 1968, right?
Yeah. Is there anything, anything else to come before?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Whoa, 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 you didn't do, you didn't do my, your Council Attorney comments. You, you ended up, and just kept talking, okay?
I said, is there any?
Can I have the floor?
You can. I did say, is there anything else for the Council?
I know, I know, but I guess you didn't listen.
Sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry.
All right, go ahead.
Anyway, couple things, yes. And I, and I have maybe discussed this with a few of you. And I'm going to need some guidance from the Attorney. But next year, starting next year, obviously, one way or the other, we're going to have a new auditor. And I have been saying ever since the mess in Michigan City happened with funds and some of the Council members over there, saying that they didn't have any idea because the Controller and the Mayor were handling these things. I would at least like to see on the agenda, maybe it would come after Liaison Report, where the auditor has a brief, a balance-ending number of our accounts, such as CAG, CED, and General. You know, I think there's about six of them there, CCD, that I would be looking for. And I would like to see that on the agenda. And, and that would take place January 1st, or, I mean, you know, the first thing, meeting. And then, secondly, I've been saying this for a long time, too. All of our Council-appointed positions, I know we, we have those that are, that are in the position and it's always available for any member to bring someone new, but I would like, again, for transparency, to say, let's, let's announce this. Let's say, hey, the Council's, there was somebody from Pita Bola that's going to expire, and let individuals know, so it's not the same individuals. And a lot of them are not paid positions, and, and they need to know that. But I would think that on the website, and I would like to even see it in the paper on a public notice to say, these are the positions that the Council has to appoint for 2021. And if we get any offers or, you know, response, we do, that's, that's what I would like to comment.
And we'll add that to the agenda for November, for the Council to vote.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We do that every year.
You advertise them?
Yes. We, we advertise those positions. We don't always get, we don't always get a response from it, but we always advertise[1655.54]